All right, good evening. Today is Monday, April 4, 2022. This is a special meeting and a workshop of the Board of Education. Do we have a motion to enter into meeting? Laura, second. Cynthia, all in favor? All right, great. First item is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as are all.
All right, so we'll get right into our presentation, budget review presentation.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our board meeting tonight. We're going to do a budget review presentation for the 2022-2023 school year. Tonight is the summary of the proposal that we have been doing for you. We've done a series already of presentations detailing our budget plans for next year. I am joined this evening by Ms. Faith Sparks, our business manager. I would also like to thank our building and district leaders for their input and collaboration with staff on this presentation. I especially want to thank Mr. Christopher Keough, who is here tonight, for his input on curriculum instruction and technology. And also here tonight is Dr. Kate Sweeney for her input and resourcefulness in programming for students with disabilities and for student services. And the building leadership, Tocco Middle School, Tocco High School principal, Dr. Bart Linehan, and sixth through 12th grade assistant principals, Mr. Scott De Bellis and Mr. Paul Tobin, who also supervises sports and extracurriculars. And I want to thank the Cottle Elementary School administrators, Principal Mr. John Marash and AP Mr. Peter Kilgallen, and all of the building level and district level people for their innovation and careful planning to ensure success for all students. Over the past few Board of Education meetings before we started with the budget, as you know, we've been giving you the results of our previous budget priorities. Whether it's the caring and responsive co-teach classrooms, the district's innovative team programs, or our school's multifaceted evidence-based reading program, or even our new sports club, our community invests in our students' well-rounded educational experience. These programs will continue and therefore all be included in the 2022-2023 school budget. Now, we always start with our mission and goals because that's where we come up with all of our strategic plans and our budget. In our district, driving all our work is a specific mission, to prepare every student for excellence. And the three specific goals that undergrid our strategic plan, which also has goals in many areas, is to enhance academic performance for success in college, career, and global citizenship, building and fostering strong relationships between our district and the community we serve, and ensuring fiscal responsibility and sustainability to meet the needs of all of our students, again, to prepare every student for excellence. And again, this is our strategic plan. These are really the four pillars of the plan. It's the diverse needs of learners, and then there's goals under that area, professional learning is another major area, social-emotional learning, and contemporary teaching and learning. And we've done presentations to the board on these goals before. Here are our points of pride. We look at this every board meeting when we're looking at why we do what we do in the budget. And we are very happy about our students and the different areas that they are excelling in, academics, arts, athletics, extracurriculars, and volunteerism. On this chart, you see how well our students achieve, and because of all that we do and all that this budget has, we see our students getting into some great colleges. This list is not exhaustive. It's from the last few years that I have been here, and we are so proud to see the Tocco students move on to schools such as, and we just got a student into Cornell last week. And actually, he was a student who, I'm just going to give a shout out to him. He did a presentation to us. I don't know if you remember Papa. He got into Cornell, very excited. NYU, we have kids that got into the Sunnys. Now, the State University of New York, they're hard schools to get into these days, and we've gotten many students into SUNY schools. They're affordable, semi-affordable, but they're certainly better than the private colleges, so that's why they are so competitive. University of Miami, Holy Cross, Villanova, Boston College, MIT, and so many others. So we're so proud of our students. And as you know, Tocco students compete. Not only do our students achieve academically, they soar in all venues. And one of those venues is sports. And we're a little school, but, boy, we fight and we win many competitions. Our football team, this fall, won their season championship, and our girls' soccer team won the Class C championship. Meanwhile, our volleyball team soared championship wins and an undefeated season for our JV athletes. And those kids will be going on to varsity, and they were terrific this year. Our cross-country team, which is new, had five athletes qualify for states. Very, very exciting. Tocco students rise. Our athletic accomplishments, and that was just the fall, so now I'm into winter. Athletic accomplishments include our girls' basketball team celebrating the most wins by a girls' basketball team in our school history, and we've been celebrating them, our first sectional championship. Our cheerleaders returned this season, and they won many first place, many second place. They were third place in the sectionals. They went to the nationals. They almost placed. They did great. And also, our bowling team saw five bowlers qualify for sectionals. We are also cheering on our Special Olympics students. That team has just completed four hockey, and they're in their basketball seasons. Our Tocco students soar. The return and introduction of new teams was a highlight of last year's budget, which we saw this year. We are excited to welcome the return of varsity competitive cheer and the new teams JV girls lacrosse and to welcome modified boys lacrosse and, again, a very successful cross-country team. Tocco students impress in so many areas. We joined this year the highly competitive New York Debate League. Many very high-ranking schools are in that league and many private schools, and our students participated in rigorous championships and did really well. A few weeks ago, those of you who got to see this, I was really delighted to see the middle school, high school performance of Into the Woods. It was amazing. Really, it was very on a professional level, and we look forward to Charlie and the Chocolate Factory at Cottle. Also, our Habitat for Humanity Club has really rolled up sleeves to help restore local homes and buildings, and students in our life skills class at the high school continue to learn job and life skills. We have a program called Tiger Bites. We are also so impressed by all our students, but this is just a little snapshot of the wonderful work that our students have done this past year. And they also amaze us. Our Tocco students amazed in academics and volunteerism. Our Tocco Middle School Science Olympia team took home 10 medals for their work in inquiry and experimentation, and our high school Science Olympia team are gold medals in anatomy and physiology. Our student performance received accolades, as I said in the play, but also in performing at NISMIA, and we had a student awarded the Carson's Scholar Award. Our National Honor Society has been so busy this year contributing to the community through events like food drives and coach drives. And also, our students, I had to stick this in because we didn't have anything for spring, so our softball team won its first game Thursday. I don't have a picture of them, but I'll be getting one up on Facebook. The varsity baseball team had some wins already. They opened with a win. And the golf team, I know they opened with a win, and I heard they won against Eastchester. When was that?
Today.
Today? Today. So our kids continue to amaze us. And finally, in the arts. We are really getting known for our arts program. Our Tocco students are master performers. I mean, you should hear the Strings Concert, see our marching band. Our high-level arts program helps students to succeed, excel, and grow. I want to thank the community and the board for all of this, but also for their investments in the arts, because the arts, with the sounds of music, the visuals of artwork, and the excellence of live performances, really enrich our community. And our Tocco students work. We have seen a sharp, sharp rise in senior internship programs. Our kids are working, about 95% of the seniors will be starting internships, demonstrating that Tocco students want to work. They are learning work and career skills in high school. And the Tocco faculty and staff prepare, and so do the students. This year, we have implemented data teams and additional structures for analysis of data. We've launched a Tocco Learning Center grounded in community partnerships. We have one at Ecap, and we have one at the library. We expanded early literacy instruction in third grade and continued to bridge the gap between elementary and middle school through vertical articulation and program alignment with Mr. Keough, the teachers, and the principals. Along the way, our students and teachers have been recognized and celebrated across the region. Next, we look at enrollment and sections. Now we're into the piece of the budget for next year. At the last budget presentation, I shared some details of our investigation into class-size research and policy. I did this as it was the board's goal to look at this this year. And we see that in Tocco, from these upcoming slides, our average class size is very beneficial to learning. At the Cottle School, this represents the changes, or if there were any, in enrollments and sections at Cottle. As you can see, the numbers are remaining constant in our current projections. As a result, there is no staffing or section changes in the elementary school. Similarly, despite a boost in enrollment in the middle school this year, there are no changes to the number of sessions or staff required. In terms of Tocco High School, since high school courses are more varied and plentiful, we don't just look at enrollment when considering staffing needs for next year. As of now, there are no major changes in enrollment, but we will be proposing additional staff to help broaden our options and learning pathways for students. So now we're going to look at the budget additions. With our enrollment stable and our strategic plan in full swing, and we are really on a trajectory doing great things in Tocco, we will look to build on the positive. The changes in curriculum at the elementary school have all been detailed in previous workshops and also what we want for this year in previous budget presentations. So we're looking at the Wonders Program. It's an evidence-based K-12 ELA program that empowers students to take an active role in learning and exploration in reading and speaking. That program, along with our foundations and other foundational programs, will come to $80,000 at Cottle. These are all Cottle changes. We're looking at an iReady license for teachers to enhance their toolbox. It's a digital collection of whole-class and small-group instructional resources to differentiate, $7,800. We're looking at DIBELS, which many districts use as an assessment for acquisition of early literacy skills, designed to be short, fluency measures that can be used to regulate, detect risk, and monitor the development of these early literacy and early reading skills, at $3,000. And also running records, that's more assessing a student's reading level. It's very individualized, where you can see where the student's errors are and do error analysis, $2,000. Lexia Learning is a differentiated literacy instructional modules with explicit systemic personalized learning. This is also very personalized in all the six areas of reading, and that would be $8,600 total change in curriculum or additions of curriculum in Cottle comes to 100 to 1,400. Again, you see that our focus in Cottle continues to be on reading. We certainly believe every single area is important, but we really want our kids to be out-of-the-gate readers. Meanwhile, in the middle school and high school, curriculum changes are focused on materials. We are purchasing our new middle school social studies textbook for sixth graders and strengthening our scope and sequence. Meanwhile, with changes in science standards, we are requesting updated biology textbooks, and these are all also blended with digital materials. Lastly, we have a new offering in our financial literacy program. This will be spearheaded by our own principal, Dr. Linehan, and will include a series of budget neutral seminars hosted by middle school, high school staff, some specialists in finance from the community, and Dr. Linehan himself on the topic of financial literacy. For students interested and able to take it to the next level, we will pay for seats in the Bloomberg Market Concepts Course, which is a self-paced e-learning course that provides an interactive introduction to the financial markets. Overall, it's $35,000 increase to support a bold and progressive program at the middle high school. In upcoming slides, I will detail how extracurriculars and professional learning will further provide opportunities for students. We are very excited at how great our students have been doing at all these academic clubs. It was something we talked about at the very beginning of the strategic plan, that we were going to be offering more, I guess, academic, high-level clubs for our students that they don't usually get in regular public schools. So because our Science Olympia team is growing in leaps and bounds, really, I walk by it after school. It is filled, the kids are busy, they are learning, and they've won so many championship competitions. Next year, we want to even expand this program. We also want to start a Quiz Bowl team. We see that our students really like the academic challenge. Lastly, the coding club at the high school has been successful. We want to offer it earlier, so we're going to make a middle school coding club for next year. Additionally, as presented at a previous workshop meeting, we started something called College Cafe. We found it in our budget this year, but we're adding it to next year's budget so that we can help kids. First of all, we need to help students who don't have people to help them at home with the college process. That's part of it. That's a very intricate process, as anybody who has a junior or had a junior knows. Actually, it really starts earlier than junior year, but that's a really tough year. And also, it's to help all students, and they've been meeting regularly. So any student who wants to work outside of, you know, the meetings that they have with guidance and really have a place where they can work with guidance counselors during a period and during their lunch period, actually bring their lunch and really hunker down so that they can really get started, even juniors this year are even starting. Kids have been, they've been contacted, and there are students signing up for this. So we feel it's a very forward-thinking type of extracurricular that we are putting, or co-curricular, that we are putting into our program for next year. Changes in professional learning. So we have talked a lot about, you know, different ways to infuse technology and authentic learning units into our classrooms at the middle school, high school. We're starting this at the high school really next year. It's $59,950 to really work on. Teachers will be starting in the secondary program, a middle school, high school summer program, where they will be given very intensive professional development, and then they will have a coach during the school year to help them really work on these different options that we can give kids to construct new learning pathways. And it's a kind of a paradigm shift where the kids are really figuring out, and they're really challenged to take responsibility for their own learning, solve problems, and construct meaning. The changes in staffing altogether, as we are looking now, next year, at providing different pathways for kids in high school. So we're looking at complementing the learning journey of our students who accelerate to algebra to the eighth grade and are interested in graduating with an in-depth understanding of statistics. We have seen that research has shown that mathematicians are now preferring statistics to calculus, so we want to make that an option for students. We are also adding a supervisor of student services to work closely with prevention and intervention for all students, students at risk specifically, and assistant director of special education and student services. This position is important because as we continue to address the long-lasting impact of COVID-19, and we anticipate that, you know, there will still be students and families that will need help and need extra outreach, where an administrator can meet them after school on their own time, help them figure out some of the struggles that people have had, children, students, families with COVID, or any other issue too. But we just feel like COVID has compounded some issues for some students. We will pay for this partially with federal dollars through our COVID money, so we will show you that in the budget. And additionally, we are offering next year two physics pathways. If you recall, we had a lot of families come to the board meetings saying we need to bring back a regions-level physics. We listened, we put that in the budget. We will still have AP physics, but we want to give students options. So ultimately, it all adds up to .2, .2, .2, and one 1.0 adds up to a 1.8 FTE, total net staffing changes. And the budget here includes salaries and benefits. That's why it seems high, because we put the benefits in for our staff. Now, changes in technology. In planning for changes in technology, we are entering a new installment purchase agreement with our local Bosse's to fund the replacement of Chromebooks in grades three, six, and nine. And you know we are on this type of loop that we do with Bosse's because we get a much better price when we do it with them. We are also replacing aging smartboards with new interactive flat panels, and you can see each one. You can see how much it costs. It has the project and the budgeted amount. We are also requesting a new wide-format printer. Additionally, we are investing in AV equipment so we can continue to host outdoor performances. I have to say that we have been extremely creative with wires coming out of the windows and plugging them into the indoors to have outdoor performances in some cases, and I appreciate our creativity. But I think it's time that we really upgrade with new curriculum for outdoor performances for our wonderful artistic students and any kind of other events we have outside. Lastly, our district-wide wireless upgrade will replace current wireless equipment, which is great, because this was very needed too, that has reached an end of life and end of service. It will provide state-of-the-art wireless access points throughout our district. The project will be a one-time expenditure funded with prior year's excess unreserved fund balance. Now, we are also looking at changes to furniture and equipment. To support contemporary teaching and learning, we plan to invest in new furniture for flexible learning. You'll see this in our new library and literacy center at Cottle and in classrooms where teachers participated in our summer institute to incorporate more learning, active, technology-infused experiences. We are also updating furniture in our middle school art room and investing in a fund for families who need access to musical instruments. As many of you know, if your child has played musical instruments, they're really expensive, and some kids really don't take an instrument because they really don't have the money to buy the instrument or rent the instrument. So we want to make sure that we can help all students who want to participate with a musical instrument do that. These investments in all of this is really to help all our students achieve, and the investments in innovative furniture will be funded with prior year's excess unreserved fund balance. It has to be in the budget, and Faith will explain that. Here's a summary of the budget additions. It's an increase of $606,500. And I will now turn to Ms. Sparks to talk about fiscal.
Thank you. So the 2022-23 budget summary is a proposed budget of $38,225,500. This is a 3.52% increase, or $1,298,900. The proposed tax levy increase of 2.10% or $625,352 is tax cap compliant. This chart is a summary of our tax cap calculation. It's a step-by-step guide. The tax-based growth factor is part of the calculation and is provided by New York State and is a 1.0 for our district. The allowable levy growth factor, or CPI, for the 2022-23 calculation is 2% and is the maximum allowable under the law. This brings us to our maximum allowable tax levy of $30,403,982, which is the increase of 2.10%. This chart is a chart of a proposed expenditure budget by category. This budget is a percent increase of 3.52%. On this slide, you will see a column that has the actual expenditure numbers from the 2020-21 school year, our last school year. It'll also show our current budget and our projected expenses for this school year. The 21-22 projected expense numbers are conservative estimate on where we predict we will end this year. These numbers are closely monitored and refined as we move closer to the end of the school year. You'll also see a column for the 22-23 proposed budget. Some of the big budget drivers driving the increase are debt service. This is the first year of debt service related to our 2018 capital project bonds, transportation, and one-time expenditures for furniture, professional development, and our wireless upgrade project. This pie chart shows our 22-23 proposed budget by function, with instruction being the largest percentage of the budget. The next chart shows the same proposed budget broken down by object, where you will see salaries and benefits make up approximately 72% of the budget, transportation at 4.62, Bosse's related costs at 5.87%, debt service 5.67%, sorry, supplies and materials at 1.39% of the budget. For most school districts, the town assessor is responsible for the valuation of property. Tax sorcery proceedings typically involve commercial landowners fighting their assessed value. Defending these challenges is often a long process, and resolution could take years. The district has established a tax sorcery reserve for tax refund. The balance in the reserve as of 6/30/2021 was $4,455,032. In the past, the district had issued debt to cover the costs of these refunds. For the current, the current 21-22 school year budget includes an $180,000 appropriation for debt service, which is the final payment on the 2012 and 2015 tax sorcery bonds. The proposed 2022-23 budget proposes keeping the same $180,000 level of funding to budget for tax sorcery refunds. Budgeting for tax sorcery refunds is in line with the state comptroller's recommendations to include all estimated expenditures and revenues in the budget, including tax sorcery Facilities and capital. An annual transfer to capital from the general fund operating budget allows the district to make annual renovations and upgrades to maintain and improve our buildings and grounds. This appropriation allows us to do capital work outside of large capital projects. The 22-23 proposed budget requests the same level of funding as the 21-22 school year This slide is similar to the slide we had for expenses, where it's our proposed revenue budget. There's a column for our 2020-21 actual revenues, where we ended last school year. It has our current year's adopted budget and our current year's projected revenues. These projections are conservative estimates of where we project we will end the year and are monitored closely and refined as we get closer to the end of the school year. The proposed budget is also on this slide. It shows our maximum allowable tax levy at 2.10% higher and is tax cap compliant. You will see the pilots and sales tax are increased as the 22-23 is the first year of our Marble Hall pilot and the continuation of our Tocco Housing Authority pilot. It brings our sales tax revenue in line with current estimates, as the current year, you know, was a very conservative sales tax budget, given that we did not know what the effects of the pandemic would have on sales tax revenue. Charges for other services include non-resident tuition, which is students placed by other public school districts and parentally placed. We are anticipating a slight decrease in this revenue. Other revenues include refunds of prior-year expenses, interest earnings, rental of real property. These items show an increase in the budgeted amounts, bringing them more in line with actual trends. The governor's budget includes a foundation aid increase for our district of 37.54%. The proposed budget includes an increase in building aid, most of which is related to the 2018 capital projects. This will offset the new debt related to that project. Total estimated state aid increase is $887,000, or 26.4%. And on a side note, the governor's budget also includes the continuation of UPK funding at the same level, but that is not accounted for in our general fund, so it's not on that slide, but we're very excited about that. The 22, this chart shows our 22-23 proposed budget for revenue by category, and you will see that real property taxes make up 79.5% of our budget, and state aid is about 11.10% of our revenue budget. This next chart shows the history of our appropriative fund balance. The goal is to reduce our reliance on appropriative fund balance to balance our operating budget, and 2022-23 proposed budget brings us steps closer to that goal. This next chart talks about our unassigned fund balance. We ended the fiscal year 6/30 We ended the fiscal year 6/30/21 at 0.67% over the allowable amount for unappropriated fund balance. We are allowed to have 4% of the next year's budget reserved in unassigned fund balance, and we were at 4.67%. We developed a plan to utilize these funds for one-time expenditures, such as professional development, furniture and music equipment, and to fund our wireless upgrade project. The total is $246,362. This chart shows the composition of our fund balance, as well as a conservative year-end fund balance projection. Of our $9.7 million fund balance, 61.5% or $5.9 million of it is restricted in special reserve accounts established by the board to provide for a specific identified purpose. Our restricted fund balance is for retirement contribution reserves, which is a combination of our ERS and TRS Reserve Fund for pensions, employee benefit accrued liability reserve. These are reserves where we pay out sick and personal time, sick vacation and personal time for people that retire, the capital reserve, and our tax sorcery reserve. Assigned fund balance is at $2 million or 20.8% of our total fund balance. Included in this is the 1.9 million that we've appropriated to balance the current year's budget and $50,000 in carryover encumbrances from the prior year. Unassigned fund balance is at $1,723,426 and is 17.7% of our total fund balance. Further down on this slide, you will see our projection. We are projecting a surplus of $208,225. This is a conservative projection and is monitored closely as we move closer to the end of the year. This slide shows our tax levy and budget history. The orange bars are total budget, the gray bars are our tax levy, and the black line shows the percent levy increase in each year. And you can see it's a very steady line. For the 10 years of the tax cap, Tuckahoe's levy increase has been around 1.92%. I just want to take this moment to talk about a contingency budget. In the event our budget is defeated and our district has to go to a contingency budget, the tax levy would be held at the 2021-22 school year level, which would mean $625,352 in cuts to meet the contingent budget. Now I'll talk a little bit about our COVID-19 federal grant funding. There are a number of types of funding. I'll start with our CARES Act, the CARES Act ESER and GEAR. So ESER is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. And, oh no, and GEAR is Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. We were allocated $72,550 for CARES Act ESER and $12,296 for CARES Act GEAR. Those first two lines were part of the last year's budget, 2021, and were allocated to us in the same time we had that same amount reduced, reduction in state aid. So it was not additional funds, it was to replace aid reductions. The CRRSA is Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. Our allocation was $139,929. That was supplemental funds, there was no reduction. The ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan, we were allocated $314,489. And the ARPIDEA, we were allocated $58,900, but we're still waiting on approval for that grant. And you could see these funds, these grants span multi-year periods. CARES Act funding, here you'll see a summary of our funding. We spent our full allocations during the 2020-21 school year, which was last year. These funds were given to district to remake up for reductions in state aid. We use them to help fund split classrooms at Cottle for PPE and sanitation and for technology costs related to remote learning. We did have to allocate some of these funds to private schools. That only amounted to about $368. The CRRSA funding, we anticipating, we anticipate spending these funds over a two-year period with approximately $75,000 spent in the current school year and approximately $64,000 being spent next year. $58,000 of the remaining funds will be spent next year, will be used towards the wireless project. In total, the cost of the wireless project is about $160,000. So $108,000 is coming from the general fund and the rest will be coming from the CRRSA funds. We did use these to fund moving costs for assembling, moving and assembling furniture and equipment out of the storage pods into classrooms, additional staff needed for supervision at lunch and recess, part-time cleaning staff, and some other technology supplies.
First, I just want to say one thing, like when we get this funding, we've really used the back, back. I'm on the other one. I'm sorry, and it just didn't want to slip, I'm doing that slide now. So when we get the funding that Ms. Sparks talks about, we've really used it. I mean, it wasn't, we were open, we used the money to split classrooms, to make sure that students were learning. So it was put to really good use and it was put to education. And the ESER money, the ARP money that I'm going to talk about now is the same thing. We, this is the breakdown of expenses for the ARP funding. 20% of this funding is required to be used to, at least 20%, to address the academic impact of learning loss. And we're using that in a before and after-school support program that I spoke about before with our partnerships at in the community and also doing it at Cottle School. I work with the district and building leaders, Mr. Kiel, our special education director, and also our building principals to see, we continue to measure progress of these strategies that we implement using these funds. We assess and analyze how students are doing the results. If we are, we are giving kids more time than needed to boost their learning and we're measuring their progress and we make revisions and adjustments to the plan as needed. The ARP funding can be spent through September 20th, 2024. So we have time to spend it, but we are using it in a worthwhile way and we will continue to assess how we use it. And we put that in here because I know, I think it was, one of the board members asked that we please present this to the community, you know, so we put that in as part of the budget presentation, though this is, this is money that we're getting from the state and the federal government. I mean, the federal government actually and how we're using it. So thank you. I would also like to, in conclusion, start to thank you for the opportunity, the board. Actually, this board has been quite incredible. They have continued to ensure that we are so focused on teaching and learning, and I want to thank them for that. And this budget is a reflection of theirs and the district and the teachers' values, and we believe it captures the following highlights. This budget focuses on our diverse students. Students who need support, those who strive are served by this budget and emphasizes new interventions, new programs based in research with opportunities for differentiation and post-secondary support. Meanwhile, our students who thrive and are looking for opportunities for challenge themselves are also well-served by this budget proposal. We see investments in academic clubs like Science Olympiads, coding, and academic trivia teams. To promote contemporary teaching and learning, we will train teachers over the summer and learn an active, technology-infused classrooms. We will also roll out learning in, on a financial literacy for high school students and the Bloomberg Market Essentials and a new statistics course and the return to Regents-level physics and still keeping AP Physics. All the while, we will build on the foundation of reading instruction cultivated in the elementary school. We are continuing to refine and ensure that students learn the explicit skills of reading. And it benefits all students, not just students with dyslexia. It benefits all students. We want kids to be great readers. And when they're readers early, it makes a difference. It is critical that schools and districts offer explicit systematic instruction and the foundational literacy skills to all students, as well as a well-rounded literacy program. We are proud that this value underlies the work of our board, our teachers, our administrators, and our district, and this budget continues to support that. I would like to also, I thank the board, but I'd also like to take this time to thank Faith Sparks, our business manager, for her very intrinsic, comprehensive, and cohesive presentation. I said it last time, it's like, I think that everybody can understand what you're talking about. It's very clear. Ms. Sparks has taken into hand all the measures of the 2022-23 budget to preserve fiscal and sustainable responsibility for the district. And she cares the same way the board and everybody here. She, we're all laser-focused on our kids. We look forward to the weeks ahead. We look forward to the board hopefully adopting the budget on April 19th. And the community will be asked to vote on May 17th, so we want everybody to come out. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Would you like our guest?
Sure.
Please come join.
Yeah, a very good presentation, as usual. So I guess we'll go around, anybody has any questions or? I know this is the second time through, this is the last one, so. Comments and questions, but I'll give the folks a chance first. You guys have anything?
I'll stay here, right?
It was a very thorough presentation. And it's, I think, what we've all been like pushing for together. So we're excited for all the new things that we're adding.
The COVID breakdown or the extra money breakdown was great because I think that was one of the things I had to ask for. So thank you.
Do you want me to sit there? I don't.
You're pretty important in this discussion.
Because I have a couple of questions. Here, sit right next to Laura.
That was great because it did, great job breaking down all the, and the fact that you used some of the extra money for professional development and sort of really worked to certainly the advantage of the staff and everyone. So just a couple of quick questions. So when you talk about if it doesn't pass, it's, so 625 would be in cuts, you mentioned that.
Yes.
So that's just basically a standard sort of increase that happens regardless of the other things that we're talking about adding, right? So that's sort of a general, that's mostly salary benefits kind of?
Yeah, so you are, you can, you keep any contractual obligations that you legally have to keep, but your levy is limited to what it is this year. So you just, whatever, you have to have cuts in order to make, you can't raise a levy more than it is this year. Now, if the budget is defeated, you know, you could put to the voters another budget, the same budget again, but if that one fails, then you go to a, or you could just go to a contingency budget. But if it fails again, then it's a contingency budget.
Well, couldn't you, I don't mean to jump on what you're saying, but just because it's relevant to what you just asked. If that was to happen, we still have money left over, though. We have unallocated fund balance. You could, you could, in theory, pay for some of those other things through that, right?
Yes.
So the, you mentioned that from previous years, there was $180,000 and that was a bond for tax sorceries, right?
Yes.
So that we're done with that, is that, that's the 180 and then those are paid?
That, those two bonds are paid. There were two bonds, one that was from 2012 and one from 2015, so it was $60,000 and $120,000. And this year is the last year of those debt service payments, so they come off. But, you know, the state comptroller's recommendation is to budget for known expenses and tax certs, our known expenses, so we have that level of appropriation in the budget. So it just is proposing to keep it, but put it in a different line for tax sorcery refunds.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, just, it was interesting just to see that you really do have to break that out, rather than just be surprised by a line item that wasn't there.
Yes.
Thank you. And I just have one quick question, Mr. Kiel. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what an infused classroom looks like?
So over the summer, there's going to be a lot of training, eight days of training in what they call the learner-active, technology-infused classroom model, where it's built around authentic learning units that are project-driven. So the first day, kids might get a prompt about a problem that exists somewhere. And then all of the subsequent learning is infused with technologies, infused with engagement, where kids are really inquiry-driven to learn things. So the term "technology-infused classroom" is because you're supposed to be using podcasts, you're supposed to be using multimedia, you're supposed to be using, you know, breakout rooms and strategic ways.
That's interesting. I was just on a college tour and they talked about one of the classes being like that. That's what, they use that term too, so I was just wanted that made.
Infused, yeah.
It's great. I want to get them ready for that level. And it very much is college-like in that, you know, you have to group up and you're given something, a prompt, and you have to sort of be, and that's high school and middle school?
Middle school, high school.
So we're excited because we know the world that our students live in right now and where they're going to college and what they're going to be doing in the world of work. And these are the skills that kids need to have. So we want to give our students a leg up with that. Plus, it's an interesting way to learn.
Absolutely.
That's the way you really, when you take part in it, you really learn it. And so we're very excited about that.
Yeah, I think I may have asked this another time, but how many classes will be impacted by it?
So right now, we actually, we had a preview of the training with our faculty and we had more teachers express interest. So right now, we have about a cohort and a half. We have about 14 teachers who demonstrated interest in doing the summer institute. And then they'll also get coaching throughout the year. So it depends on where they deploy those units that they design, but I.
Was it within any, like more content areas than others, like social studies, science?
It was pretty well-divided, but I feel like we have a lot of representation in science. But again, there's, there's a nice representation across the board in terms of ages, content areas. We have special education teachers participating, so it's a really nice group of people. Subsection of people, yeah.
Great, thank you. I want a hug. Anybody else?
So I guess, just to follow up on what Laura said, is the goal eventually going to be that everybody's on board with this? And what do we think the rollout for that will be, like timeframe-wise?
So they recommend a couple of phases. So this will be the first year and teachers will get trained in it. They'll get, throughout the year, coaching. And then what the consultants would recommend would be an additional training for them next summer and that would probably be something, you know, if the first year of implementation is successful, we present as part of next year's budget. And then invite more teachers in and then start to train teachers to train the teachers. So it becomes more of an internal model.
Sounds great. I'd love to see, like, I'm just thinking about when we, the foundations and watching those videos. I'd love to see videos of that too.
Right. We think of them as being, give it some time, but making a board work out on it.
And not tomorrow.
We've already been talking about doing something on that next year.
So on the Cottle curriculum, investments, the big chunk of it is the WONDERS, about $80,000, right? Can you just explain a little more like what that $80,000 is going to buy us exactly? Is that, is that materials, is that training, is it a combination of?
That, yeah, a combination. So it comes with new texts, updated materials, online licenses. A lot of, when we, when we looked at different curriculums and materials and resources, we came back to WONDERS because it had a lot of the groundwork that we'd already laid, but a lot of really important improvements that kind of lined up with what we were doing with foundations, science of reading stuff. So it's in many ways like a refresh of a lot of the curriculum materials we're using right now.
Okay. Is it, is it more heavy materials or more heavy instruction? Like what is the bulk at $80,000?
So it's going to be a lot of texts. So it's a lot of tangible materials that will be used for, you know, year to year. And then there are some costs that are part of that $80,000 that would be part of just the, you know, recurring yearly budget.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. How much that is recurring? By the way, I'm very supportive of that. I think the fact that we're investing so much in reading is awesome, but that's a big number and I'm just curious how much of that is going to be recurring.
Was that a four-year agreement?
It is a four-year.
It was a four-year agreement, so the license, the licensing is four years on it. And then the consumables, a lot of them will just automatically ship the next year. So I would think it maybe is a couple of thousand dollars. We don't, I don't know exactly what it would be next year, but it's not $80,000. So, and that is a four-year license agreement.
So a lot of that licensing cost, $80,000 upfront for four years?
Yes.
Got it, okay. And then I see, I don't know if you addressed this and I missed it, but the additional salary for the supervisor of student services, you had it in the budget of 60, but then it's also $40,000 from the COVID fund. So it's basically to a $100,000 position that you're splitting the cost.
Right.
Right. But that $40,000 that we're getting from the COVID funding is not going to be ongoing.
Right. So what I said is, I think you might have missed it, but I said that this may just be a one-year position. Just to see how, you know, just to also ensure that we have something really strong in, for, you know, that's like an administrative position that will, could reach out to parents and families. There are some people that. There are some people that really had a hard time during COVID, some students, some families, and we just want to be able to really reach out and move the system forward, you know, be it social services, be it helping the kid get counseling, or improving attendance, you know, all of that.
And is that a new hire or is it somebody in-house that you're going to?
It's, it would be a new hire.
A new hire, yeah. And what would be sort of, what would that look like as far as when you search for someone, like supervisor of student services?
Be somebody who has some background in really working. It could be social work, it could be teaching, it depends, it has to be a person who's been able to work with youth at risk. I think that would be the most.
But not a licensed administrator?
It would be a licensed administrator. Because it's going to be outside, it's going to be in school, like helping the principals and helping the social workers, and certainly helping Dr. Sweeney, you know, with some special education tasks also, but it will be within the school day, but also somebody who could work outside the school day also.
Right. Yes, it will be an administrator-level position. So one thing that, you know, I think the, the work that you want that person to do all makes sense to me, but one thing that maybe could be added to that, if I can just suggest, is maybe looking at some more innovative ways to address substance abuse, vaping, things of that nature. And that's by no means a Toccoho issue, it's a, it's a high school issue across the country. It's not, it's not specific to Toccoho, but I know, and I'm sure we cover it in health class, but I know we have the great, you know, the DARE program in Cottle, which is awesome, but I feel like that message needs to keep being pounded into middle school, high schoolers. Some of them are just not going to take, get the message, but even if one kid out of 10 is woken up or, you know, affected by that type of instruction or lesson, I think it's a, it's a win.
Right.
So if we're going to have someone in that role, I would love to see if there's going to be some ways we can do some more innovative stuff in terms of, you know, awareness.
And ageism. Because like the DARE program is really elementary and to.
That's a great idea.
Bring in some guest speakers, recovering folks.
And there are some goods, there are some good programs with that, and we could definitely do that, and we also, it got lost, at the same time as COVID, we had that survey done, we saw like, you know, we could do something like that again to look at, you know, substance abuse in the district, to see if, if there is an issue, perhaps do another survey, look at, you know, anonymously, look at.
Remind me about that, I can't remember, what was the survey?
It was through the community fund, it was called, God, I just wanted to throw my tongue. But it was.
Was it the Coalition?
No, it was through the community fund, and they put together a Eastchester-Toccoho and Bronx.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 no.
Right, so, and then COVID hit. We were all ready to do that.
That was right before they had that, you know, Concordia, before Concordia closed.
Yes, 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 of course.
And that was sort of the, they were just getting going with it, so those kinds of things.
So we could resurrect all of that.
Yeah, and these are not easy issues to address.
And Dr. Sweeney has experience in that.
I was going to say, I would agree that it has to hit every single kid, at the very least, the middle school, high school, because like you said, yeah, they have health and things like that, but that's, you only have health.
It's a message, it's a message you want to just keep pounding and pounding and pounding, you know?
It should be every year. Every year has to be addressed, and maybe more than one time a year.
Right, right. It feels to me, as an outsider, like we don't do all that much in that area for that middle school, high school. I'm sure it's addressed, like I said, in health, I'm sure it's addressed sometimes, but there's probably more we can do. And a position like this, if somebody maybe has the time to actually think about that and think of some innovative ways to tackle that.
And reach out, because there are, you know, there are student assistance, there are different ways that we can, you know, there are, we can get more involved.
Also, how it could be like, you know, like a subliminal message, like in your Instagram feed, how like they keep sending you things that you, you know, like about menopause, I'm sure you get that all the time, Rob. I'm like, yeah, whatever it is, so they're like, maybe, just maybe, she could find this information useful.
Yeah.
And they keep sending it to you, you're like, well, why? Because they know.
Psychological warfare.
Yeah, absolutely.
We did at one point have, I know one of the parents has asked us on an occasion about the guidance counselor, a social worker in high school.
Yeah.
That was eliminated, we had it at one point, and then, and sort of, that's a sort of, was a loss.
I think you're thinking about this as sort of a different way to tackle that.
A different way of tackling it, and maybe next year we'll look at tackling it another way, but I think that we just need to build some structures this year, because I think that there are some kids that are at risk.
Well, I think the budget overall is great. It certainly is, lines up perfectly with our strategic plan, and it's hitting all the stuff that I think we need to hit, so I think it's a great, great budget.
Yeah.
I did want to ask about the fund balance a little bit, and challenge you a little bit on that, if you don't mind. I'm going to put you on the hot seat a little bit.
That's okay.
So first thing I wanted to ask you was, so the 1.7 or so that we're going to have left over as unallocated fund balance, we know, I'm going to bring in the facilities committee stuff that we've been talking about, about how with the increasing, if you guys aren't aware, the last facilities committee meeting we had, we talked about how, no surprise with inflation and supply chain issues, the cost of materials is going up and up and up, and we're already starting to talk about contingencies for things that we may not be able to afford in total for the project. But one way maybe to offset that a little bit is, should we be considering taking a little more of that 1.7 and put it into the capital improvement fund? Now, I know we can't access that money for about, it's a year, right?
Yeah, so we, the money that's in there right now, we can access.
Right, the 250, but anything we put in this year, we have to wait one year?
Yeah, I'm still waiting on confirmation on that, but we could appropriate from the unreserved fund balance to make the purchase and not go into the reserve. That could be done with a board resolution.
So just taking the money directly from the 1.7 potentially? Yeah, so, so you're already thinking about it, but that's what I'm thinking, like, can we take a little bit more of this 1.7, cushion ourselves a little bit for what we think are going to be some shortfalls in the original project scope? And even if we had to put it into the capital reserve fund, if we were forced to do that, I still think it makes some sense, because maybe we can do some short-term borrowing. I know that's, we get into some dangerous waters with what has to be approved by the community, but it's, a year is going to go by, you know, we're going to be at that year mark pretty quick, right? And a lot of these, a lot of the end of this, this project won't probably be done until, well, I think we're expecting the middle of the year, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm just saying, it may make some sense to, if you could earmark some of that money without putting it into the fund, that's perfect, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think once we start to see where the bidding comes in and have an idea of where we are, there is some contingency in the estimates that the construction manager did, once we see that we can then consult with our bond counsel and see what's the best way to do it.
Okay, all right, so that's good. Now, that issue aside, which is a big issue, the increase to our budget this year, 3.52 is what, roughly like 1.2 million?
Yes.
Right? And the tax levy increase, 2.1, is how much money roughly?
625,352.
So here's the, here's the thing I want to ask you. So we just talked about the 1.7 as maybe possibly using some of that towards the capital project, so that's, that's one issue. But that issue aside, if I'm a taxpayer, here's what I'm asking you. We have essentially 3.7 million dollars left over at the end of this year. Like, if we were closed, if Toccoho was to go out of business at the end of this year and we were to close the books, we actually have like 3.7 million left over, because 2 million you're allocating to next year's budget.
I'd have to pay off the pensions.
Well, not if you have the pension, right.
Yeah, now you're in the red. That was short-lived, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I got you. And then there's still 1.7 left over.
Yeah.
So if I'm a taxpayer saying, well, if you have 1.7 left over, why are you, why are you taxing me another, you know, 500, 600,000 dollars for what reason? I mean, so I'm just challenging you on what, what the value is of keeping that 1.7 on the books versus giving some of that up in lieu of not raising taxes?
So, you know, the 1.7, that's like our savings. So to use, you know, your savings to pay for ongoing expenses is not, it's not sustainable. So eventually it will run out, and then your tax increase will just be much, much larger at the time. And if you don't go to the cap now, it will impact the cap calculation in future years because you're just starting that much lower the next year, and it really has a domino effect going on. So, you know, the, really, the unappropriate fund balance, 1.7 million would be an emergency, a one-time expense that, you know, something came up and we have to have a way to pay for it, but to use it to fund the operating budget is not sustainable. Eventually, it will run out, and then you will have to go and really have a big increase in your taxes.
Yeah, so I, so I know that, I know that there is something you give up in a tax cap environment, every year you don't take the full tax cap because you can never go back and get that money back. Now, that being said though, proud of the fact that in the previous years, we haven't always gone to the cap. We've always done some increase because it's kind of silly not to, but we haven't always gone right to the cap. This year we are.
Yes.
So, you know, but, but I think, you know, so in your estimation, 1.7 million left over and unreserved is not, is not a large amount?
No.
Right, okay. And especially being that we may need to use some of that to help us with this capital project, it makes, it makes some sense.
Yes, and we have some of that earmarked for one-time expenditures next year because it is over the 4% that we're allowed to have, so it won't be 1.7 the year after, so we are spending it down somewhat, but that's really, you know, your, your emergency go-to.
But, you know, to be fair though, some of that 1.9 million, we probably won't necessarily use at all.
Correct.
Like, literally, we didn't use any of the money that we allocated last year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. So look, I'm comfortable with it, I just kind of want to have the conversation for the audience. It's a question I'd be asking if I was a taxpayer, you have leftover money, why are you raising my taxes? But, but I think the reason is, is that you don't want to run at a, at a flat margin, you want to have a little bit of a grace period, and, and whatever you don't take in a tax year, you can't go back and take later on. But at some point though, there is, there is a certain point where you say, all right, maybe we don't have to raise taxes as much this year. I think it's silly not to raise taxes at all, but, you know, but not this year.
Correct. And, and one thing we did do in the proposed budget is bring our revenue budget more in line with actuals and trends. You know, a lot of the budget this year was very conservative because we still didn't have a lot of unknowns in the pandemic, but our sales tax budget increased 170,000, our miscellaneous items, we brought more in line so that we don't, we, we can not use our savings as much, and we know, we think it will be with what trends are showing.
Yeah, okay.
And that pilot, does that, is that the same every year from the, from that marble hall or that fluctuate?
No, it fluctuate, the marble hall, well, the base is about 389,000, and then there's formula, you know, it's, you know, 2%, or, you know, they look at their collections, and so that will fluctuate, but it'll probably stay around that amount, and the housing authority pilot hovers at around like 50, 51,000. It's another calculation based on the shelter rents that they collect.
So the bottom line though, I think if, for you in your position, you probably want to maintain, I would imagine, the maximum amount of allocated fund balance that we're allowed to maintain, which isn't much, which is not much higher than that, it's pretty much, that's the cap, pretty much. So if anybody's thinking, anybody was wondering, that's, that's it, this is as much as we can keep.
Yeah.
So next year, if we find ourselves in an even more fund balance, we're going to, that can come off the tax levy essentially. We can allocate that money to the budget and take that much less taxes, correct?
Could, yes. It could go into a reserve, it could go that way too.
Right, okay. All right, good. Okay, I'm good. Anybody else?
No, I, I think it's a great, I think it's, we're doing some really, some great, we saw this momentum, you know, between the bond, the project, having a new library and a new cafeteria for the Cottle, and, and then bringing all these programs in, we sort of have this, you know, to stop the momentum and say, you know, do the tax, you know, we're not going to levy the tax, but I think, listen, I think most people in the district are seeing changes in our, in the school, and I think they're also seeing, whether they're retired, their house value, or they're, have a child that's going to come here, they're seeing a value, and I think that it's, it's a perfect opportunity to, to just, you know, have a lot of great things in the budget. So thank you, I thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent budget, really, really well done, really well presented as well. It's exciting stuff, it's good stuff, we're, we're definitely on a good path here, so. All right, good? All right, we got a little bit of business to work on here. All right. Consent agenda, motion to approve consent agenda, items two through three. Do you have a motion? Cynthia, second, Thorez, any discussion on any of the consent agenda items?
I actually have one question about the calendar.
Yes.
And why, why we're starting again before Labor Day.
I know, I know.
I'm like, when did we become Connecticut? Like, I started, we were in New York, we started after Labor Day, and I just can't wrap my head around why.
Yeah, do you want to speak to that?
Other than the universe or?
Yeah, well, we, lots of things go into making the calendar, every year you're challenged by like Jewish holidays now, we have Juneteenth added, just, it's complicated to get in everything, and we also do it with our teachers unit, you know, there's some compromise in how we do it, so this is, this is what we agreed on to start, and before you know it, it will be here. It will, it will be fine, and every year it's just, the calendar is challenging.
Does the kid, is it teachers or no, the kids are in?
Kids go back the first.
Yes, I think probably with some folks that I have you bad is that, you know, it's, you're coming back to school before Labor Day weekend's over, and a lot of folks plan vacations through the Labor Day weekend, so. I can't imagine the teachers want to come back before Labor.
Well, they always have though.
They always have?
Yeah, because they've always, no, they've always had professional development days.
Yeah, before, yeah, okay.
So like, for them, that ends, that week is not really, it's a work week for them, not a vacation week.
Yeah.
I think for the students, it's like, summer camps end, for younger kids, I mean, for our age kids, sports begin already, so really, you know.
Yeah.
But the teachers are coming in in August for.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, I think for families, like, camps end in the middle of August, sleepaway camp, kids are back, they use that time for family vacations. I was just wondering. I mean, I personally don't, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm sure it's frustrating for some, but I, I don't doubt there's a lot of work that goes into.
Oh, no, I don't doubt.
Yeah, it is contractual, and you have to get in a certain number of days that, you know, you have to give students days and teacher days. This was struggling, a lot of, a lot of districts have calendars that look like this this year.
Right. I just feel like it's a change, like it used to never be something, and now it seems like it's just become more.
Right, and we're not the only one.
No, I know we're not, I know we're not.
You think it's going to stay like that, or is that just?
I think it depends on these holidays and where they fall, you know?
Well, if they keep adding more holidays, we're going to be going to school all summer.
It feels like the holiday frequency is going up, not down.
And, you know, and everybody has their holidays, which, you know, when we have to follow it, but just, every time you add one in, it just takes away somewhere else, so.
Right.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Great. Business of the board. Approve disposal of public property. We resolve that the Board of Education, in accordance with policy 6900, disposal of public property declares the following equipment to be obsolete: 200 elementary student chairs assorted colors. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the above by offering for sale to local municipalities or local nonprofit organizations, or sell at public auction or sale. Otherwise, they will be recycled in the most environmentally appropriate manner. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second, Laura, any discussion on that? All in favor? Accept donation, whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to William E. Cottle Elementary School and whereas District would like to accept such donation, is hereby resolved by the Board of Education to accept the donation from the Toccoho PTA Math and Science Committee of three 3D printers. Have a motion? Thorez, second, Cynthia, any discussion? Thank you very much to the PTA, that's really...
Yeah, that's very cool.
Grade three, 3D printers is not small, that's, that's pretty significant, so that's awesome. Thank you very much. All in favor? Great. Accept donation, whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the District for purposes of covering costs associated with JASCO program and whereas District would like to accept donation, it is hereby resolved, the Board of Education to accept the donation from Toccoho School Foundation in the amount of $15,000. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second, Thorez, any discussion on that?
Can I speak first?
Sure.
First of all, I would like to really thank the Toccoho School Foundation, this is more than we've ever gotten for JASCO and it's a great program, so we just very appreciative.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, I'm a little partial, I have two kids now in JASCO. My son did JASCO this year, which was pretty cool. He did it to help save the program because there wasn't enough participation, so he jumped in there, him and his friend, and it was a great performance and it was awesome, but it went both nights, but participation's definitely down, so it's probably due to COVID and the fact that it didn't go for two years, so hopefully with this kind of support, it'll, it'll come back up because it's a great program. All in favor? All right. Proven IPA. Resolved at the Board of Education, the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby adopts the IPA, IPA resolution as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Do we have a motion? Thorez, second, Laura, any discussion on that? All in favor? Approve a treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report and budget transfer report. Resolved, the Board of Education approves the treasurer's report, revenue report, appropriation report and budget transfer report for the period ending February 28, 2022. Do we have a motion? Thorez, second, Cynthia, any discussion on that? All in favor? Prove extra classroom activity reports. Resolved, the Board of Education approves the extra classroom activity reports for the middle school and high school for the period ending, ending February 28, 2022. Do we have a motion? Laura, second, Cynthia, any discussion on that? All in favor? All right. Prove professional services agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District approves a professional services agreement with IDE Corp. for professional development services for the period of the summer of 2022 and September 1, 2022 through May 31, 2023 at an amount not to exceed $59,950. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second, Thorez, any discussion on that? All in favor? Good. Add professional services, whereas the Board of Education approves professional services provided by Benedetto Bendio and Company LP for GASB 87 leasing standard reporting on behalf of the District in the amount not to exceed $5,000. Do we have a motion? Cynthia, second, Thorez, any discussion? What is GASB 87 leasing standard?
It's GASB 87, it's the governmental, it's okay, the governmental accounting standards board, it's on the standards we have on our financial statements and there's a new proclamation and standard called GASB 87 leases where we have to value and make cer- certain entries regarding capital leases on our financial statements.
All right, GASB.
Sounds very complex.
GASB, it is, yes.
Municipal accounting. Yeah, it sounds complicated, so...
All in favor? All right. Prove agreement, oh, you're making me work on this one. Oh, man, this is a long one. Puggle up, puggle up. I'll go, I'll do my auctioneer voice here, I'll go quick. Whereas pursuant, pursuant to the New York State General Municipal Law, section 10316, Toccoho Union Free School District is authorized to make purchases of apparatus, materials, equipment or supplies or to contract for services related to the installation, maintenance or, or repair of apparatus, material, equipment and supplies through the use of a contract led by the United States of America or any agency thereof, any state or any other political subdivision or district therein, if such contract was awarded to the lowest responsible bidder or on the basis of best value consistent with General Municipal Law, section 103, and made available for, for use by other governmental aid entities. And whereas the Chappaqua Central School District, which is a, which is a political subdivision of the state of New York, solicited best value offers for purchase of a musical instrument, of musical instruments and equipment, including parts and materials, rental and purchase of sound, video and lighting equipment and service and repair of sound, video and lighting equipment. And whereas the Chappaqua Central School District awarded a one-year agreement with, with a term of March 26, 2022 to March 25, 2023 to the Music Store Incorporated, which was the best value offerer, and through the specifications, this agreement was made available